Okay, I show the time to be 6:00 PM Central Standard or Central Daylight Time. Regular City Council Meeting Monday, May the 19th, 2014, Jasper City Hall, 465 South Main Street. Let the record show that all of the members of the Jasper City Council are present. And I'd like to invite everyone, as always, to the people's house with proud of you coming out tonight. We would ask that you please turn your cellphones off, particularly the vibrates, so that they don't interfere with our meeting. With that said and done, when I, I was the first one, mine rang, so anyway, it does happen, please put it over on silent or whatever there, so it doesn't interrupt our meeting. Denise Hilton is here visiting us tonight. Denise, could you give us an opening prayer?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for being with us. Lord, we pray for the decisions that our leaders make. We ask that you guide them. And, Lord, that we meet peacefully and prayerfully for the things you have us do. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. First item that we're going to discuss tonight is the swearing-in of officers or just council members for their newly elected positions. We have Judge Jackson here to do the honors tonight. Judge, would you come forward, please? Would our members of council and meetings for you tonight, please come forward?
Maybe if we could stand over on this side together, and there are going to be several things that you're going to need to sign. Mitch, could you come over this way? Raymond, this way. I guess I still need to speak through the microphone. Mike, would you report him?
I think you could. I think you'd be good.
Just come closer this way, if you will. It'll make it easier, and we'll make sure everything gets on the record like they need to have it done. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
I know this is always a joyous time, and we appreciate your service and look forward to another good year. There's two forms that we're going to sign, two oaths. And if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me, and after I say the word "I," then I'll put a legal space, if you'll state your own name, and then if you'll state the oath with me, follow that. Okay? In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, I, do solemnly swear or affirm, do solemnly swear or affirm, that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of council member. And Hazel, you are going to be District Number Three. Mitch, you're District Number Five, and Raymond, you're District Number Four, of the City of Jasper, of the State of Texas. And will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States, and of this state. So help me God. Congratulations. Then there's one other document that I'll go ahead and if you'll read with me as well. Again, you'll insert your name with the pause. Aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear or affirm, that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute, any money or thing of value, or promised any public office, or employment, for the giving or withholding of a vote at the election at which I was elected, or as a reward to secure the appointment, or confirmation, whichever the case may be. So help me God. And each of you are appointed to the respective council member districts. Hazel Johnson, District Number Three. Mitch McMillan, District Number Five. And Raymond Hopson, District Number Four. Under penalties of perjury, you declare that you've read the foregoing statement and the facts stated therein are true. All right. Congratulations. If you have your pen, your weapon, we're going to need your signatures. You'll sign both on the first page. There's the signature of the officer in the middle of the page, and then we'll turn the page over. And there'll be a line at the bottom. He's here.
I didn't bring a hard, a big camera in with me.
All right.
We'll get a shot.
Turn towards the cameras and let them take the pictures, folks. Everybody good?
Yep.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Judge. Okay, we have to have no next proclamation presentation for motorcycle awareness. And that was done some time ago, though. I think we're just now handed out. It has to do with the society finding more citizens involved in motorcycle on the roads of our country. That motorcycles have roughly unprotected, therefore more prone to injury, death, crash. Campaigns have helped to inform riders and motorists on motorcycle safety issues. The mayor of the City of Jasper do I proclaim the month of May as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month. Can we have someone here from that group? Somehow or another, I thought you probably wore a motorcycle when I saw that. You come up and get there. Do right.
Sorry, I'm late. I thought it was going to be six thirty.
No problem. No problem. Thank you. Appreciate you. Okay, we have an updated report, update to JECO report provided by Executive Director Kerry Ellis. Kerry?
No, Councilman Schofield is on our board now. He asked to come and uptake. I'll just let you know what JECO's been doing. We are getting a health pill that's going to be coming here, that's going to be working here soon. And then Terravito Chem, the company that was here before, they have expanded, put a new mill in, and, or it's not a mill, a new factory to take care of their business and help them get going too. We are also looking to, right now, we're in contract negotiations with a company who's going to help us do some strategic planning. Everybody's probably heard of Beaumont-Morang area down there, between Lake Charles and that Beaumont-Jefferson County area. There's going to be many, many projects. I've heard anywhere between $180 and $280 billion worth of projects that are scheduled to be taking place. Jasper is positioned at this point in time to tap into that. So we'll be meeting with a company that'll help us do some strategic planning, decide what companies we're going to go talk to, what companies will work here in Jasper. There'll be meetings, community meetings and that sort of thing. We're also working with a PR firm in contract negotiations to help Jasper's image and national estate media and that sort of thing to have approval of that. So that's basically what we're doing. Our Board President, Mr. Sid Stenger, has appointed a committee to also work with the city to, in their repaving of Manuel Street. So we're talking about that here in the near future and get that project going.
Are you having trouble hearing back there, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, maybe I should have got you to speak a little closer into that microphone.
I'm sorry. You want me to start up?
No, just anything else you say, try to get a little boy into the microphone. That blower back there is always a problem. Thank you so much for presenting that report. Thank you, Councilman Schofield, for having that facilitated. We have in your packet tonight, information for council members as requested on possible annexation, areas outside the City of Jasper. If you'll notice, that's only for information. Then you have also your departmental reports. If you go over those departmental reports, you'll find in your folder tonight. And it seems like that I'm rushing through tonight's meeting. I am somewhat, because somehow or another, City Councilmember Raymond Hopson serves on this council and another board, the Fireman's Pension Committee, somehow or another, they scheduled those same meetings on the same night. So he needs to slip out here in a little while.
I'm leaving early.
No, I didn't say that. That's at 6:30. Okay, we have any requests, departmental reports? Okay, a public comment. We only have one public comment that's been filed, Willie Land, former City Councilman. Willie, you have three minutes, sir.
I don't plan to take it all three minutes up, but I'd like to say good evening to everybody. Now, I rode in opposition of the annexation. I understand that the Rile Lakers, Homewood, and the, and the, this other right across from Wal-Mart, City. And I rise in opposition of those, like I said. It's designed to dilute the black vote. It's, this is, I mean, it's just plain, it's a nose on your face, I don't care what you call it, but we know what, we all know what the end result's going to be. So if you people are going to go through with this kind of stuff here, not only do you just want to get rid of a few, but you want to get rid of this one right here, you're going to get rid of a couple, start on this board if this thing goes through. We need to do, we need to do better than what we are doing here. It's not going, there's no quitting here. There's no quitting. We're not going to ever quit. They might raise relationships, and when you pat them on the back with one hand, talking about some town hall meetings and everything, you're patting on the back with one hand, you stab them in the back with it. So if some of us can see through this, if some of us can see through it, and like I said, I'm going to fight it hard as I can with everything I know how. It's just that plain and simple. Don't say, I believe Land going to do it. I'm telling you now, I'm going to do it, with every ounce of fiber in my play. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Land. We have up next, Consider Approving for Two Sets of Exmits, regular City Council Meeting, April the 21st, 2014, and the special called City Council Meeting Annexation Workshop, which is April the 24th, 2014. Move to approve. Move to approve by Mr. Scott. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Schofield. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, let the record show that the measure passed unanimously. Consider request from Mr. Jim White and Mr. Morgan McDonald concerning possible purchase of land adjacent from Fletcher Street and Hemville Street. Would the city's administration or would the, who would speak on this? Did you research that?
Not yet, Councilman. Apparently, in talking with Mr. White, there are some utility easements.
Could you speak into the microphone a little bit there, please?
Can you hear me all right?
So to watch in the back here.
Apparently, along Fletcher and Lila Street, there may be some city utilities easements. Mr. White owns an adjoining tract. Mr. McDonald owns some other tracts that kind of intersect with Fletcher and Hemville Street and Lila. Their request is to be able to purchase these old utility easements from the city. I haven't, I was just told about this this week, or the last, or last week. I haven't researched it to determine whether or not the city actually just holds an easement that is not being used, or is it actually land? If it's land that the city owns, then certainly we would have a process in which if people wanted to buy extinct property, we'd have to bid for that, since it's property. But if it's an easement that's not being used, that has no really use for the city, then we may be able to just release our easement to an adjoining landowner. But I haven't had the opportunity to go out and look at the land, if there's sewer, if there's water lines, if there's utility lines on this easement, then that's completely different. But that's about all I have. We're still in the early stages of it, and I was just advised about this, but I will look into it and have, and I'll, you know, we'll report back to you next, next month if I'm certain.
Move to table.
Yeah, there's really no action that we can take at this time. It's just reported on that. And I was talking to Mr. White and Mr. McDonald about their respective tracts and how this apparent easement may affect.
I think they said it was supposed to be a street that was never built. That's what I was told. I know where it's at, but I don't know the details of it.
And I haven't had a chance to actually go and visit the track site and get with the engineer about whether or not there's any utilities that are being used on there or not. And I'll report back, so there's really no action.
No action to be taken. You'll report back at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consider request from Jasper Public Library Board Members approving changes to update the internet policy. Item number three. Do we have anyone here from the library tonight? Okay, we don't have anybody else. What, what are they basically trying to do? I didn't look in here in that particular deal with this. These are all, I guess they're requested by the, the library board. So do you, we have a motion to approve?
In a second.
In a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show that the measure passed unanimously. Item number four, request from Mrs. Hazel Johnson on no littering and no dumping signs. Mrs. Johnson, would you like to speak on that?
Yes. The trustees and I, as you know, cleaned up certain areas in my district that were pretty bad. Trash, poth, mattresses dumped, sofas. So I called Chief McDonald and asked him would he enforce that law from now on. We need to put up no littering, any illegal dumping signs to let people know that they will be fined if they are caught littering and are dumping.
Do we have a motion?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Have a second, a motion by Mr. McMillan, a second by Mr. Scott. Any further discussion on the issue?
How many signs are you wanting to put up? Or do you know?
Mr. McDonald, what area were you telling me was so bad that you all, it would take a day, we'd be in trouble to move all the debris?
At the end of, I tried to, I tried to, I tried to, I tried to, probably the worst area, behind the.
Behind loads.
What I think would be beneficial would be to advise the public that dumping not only includes a fine of $500 to $2,000, but also you could be jailed up to six months because it becomes a Class B misdemeanor as the size of the open road is large.
And the fine if you're caught littering is from $200 to $300?
It's $500 to $2,000.
Is it? Good. That's good.
And Councilman Johnson was talking with me, the folks, we're not talking about, just council members, we're not talking about people just throwing out a sack or something. We're talking about people throw out a couch or a chair, TV, mattresses, washing machine.
We found several, just dumped in the woods. So, you know, I'm not the cleanup lady. So I went back three weeks later, and it was in the same condition it was before we started. So I think it's time to enforce those laws.
No apparent more discussion. Do we have a vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the measure passed unanimously. Consider Resolution Number 2335, authorizing signatories for contractual documents providing for hurricane-ike recovery projects. Texas Community Development Development Grant Contract 10-5074-000-5052, and DRS Grant Number 010077. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion, sir.
Motion by Mrs. Johnson. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Schofield. Any further discussion on this issue? I skipped number five, we'll come back to you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show that the measure passed unanimously, and due to bifocal glasses, I believe. I skipped over number five. Consider request for low order for dangerous building at 637 East Gibson Street. Fire Marshal, would you speak on this?
It's a building that's been unoccupied for approximately 12 to 15 years. All parties have been served. The person served here in Jasper, there's one area that couldn't be located by address within Dallas somewhere. The property was posted. They're all aware that the building is a dangerous structure. It greatly exceeds our danger structure ordinance and should be removed. And it's an eyesore because it's right on East Gibson, right across from 33 P in that area. It's been an eyesore for a number of years and should be removed as soon as possible.
Is that what we have here? The one you're talking about?
Yes.
No, 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 not it. Not it.
You can barely see it.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah.
Motion by Mrs. Johnson. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. McMillan. Any further discussion on this issue? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show that the measure passed unanimously. Item number seven, Consider Approving Performance Appraisal Review from the city, for the city manager and city police chief. Mr. White, do you want to speak on this?
I can, if you wish. I think all of you had requested appraisal that might be more in keeping with the chief and the city manager, so I gave you a new listing that I thought was probably, it would make it easier for those of you in the council to be able to evaluate all those positions. I think it's pretty complete. There are other creeds we could add if you wanted to make it more voluminous, but I think three pages is probably enough.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Johnson to accept that performance evaluation form. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Schofield. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Let the record show that the measure passed unanimously. Okay, I show the time to be 6:20. Let's see, what do we have up there?
You have the dinner.
We've got another item here. Okay, considering the annexation study. Council's decision?
May I speak?
Yes.
The annexation, I realize, is because the population is decreasing. However, that is not going to fix our problem. Our problem now, you know, our young people graduate. Some are fortunate enough to go to college, some are not. So they have to move elsewhere to find decent jobs. I think our problem in this city now is creating jobs for these young people to stay in Jasper. And then I think our population will increase. People will want to stay here. The amount of money spent on annexation is outside. This city cannot afford that. We can. Versus the taxes we would take in, $16,000, if I'm correct. Ms. Kelly?
For Rile Lakers, as far as maintenance and operation.
Right. And then you have to consider, after the annexation, the maintenance, the lines that have to be run, the wires that have to be into the water and Homewood addition and the other addition. Chances are, to pay for this, we'll have a tax increase. You can argue with me all you want to, but that will happen, to pay for this. I don't know if any of you realize it, but the amount of money that will cost for the annexation itself, that, that will be paid back to 30, 40 years. You know, I think it's ridiculous. I think it's senseless to annex these subdivisions. Where the, where the population is decreasing, it's not, what little it has, it's not a major problem to us. It's bringing jobs into this city. So.
And also, thanks to Mrs. Johnson, there's also another study I had talked to Mr. Kerry about, which has not come in yet. I asked her for demographic of the areas, all three areas by race, and she has Mr. Waxmore working on that in probably a couple of weeks before that comes in.
That's if they can provide it. They, no, they don't, they have the census information, but not all the census information will give them race by household. It's just depending on how fully completed the census questionnaires were submitted. And they said they would try.
We could, we could get into some voter rights violations with this thing also.
Another question I have is, what am I going to tell the people in my district? What reason am I going to give why we're fixing roads in these subdivisions and they have to dodge the hot hoes to get to their homes? What excuse am I going to give them? Go talk to the rest of the council members.
Do we have a motion? Okay, we do not have a motion. We do not have a second. So if you did, at this point, I hadn't missed over anything else here.
Got a point out there.
I don't see any other item on the agenda when we discuss.
Number nine.
Number nine?
Yeah, on the, there's a second.
Oh, yeah, okay. I got a piece of paper all in front of me here. Try to do more than that. Consider, discuss the city policy concerning the cleaning of ditches or drainage on State Highway Department rightway, specifically a section of ditch along FM 777 near the intersection of Highway 63 West, and section of ditch on Mylum Street, that is FM Road 776 at the intersection of Graham Street. And I had someone come to see me today, and they felt that the issue on 777 was no longer a concern for some reason other.
Because I spoke to the Highway Department through the supervisor, and they took care of the problem.
Well, it wasn't as of today, but the guy we drew. The other one is.
The ditch, I mean, the driveway, it's.
Now, the ditch.
The driver's house? Not the ditch.
Yeah, the ditch.
I think we may be talking to your major, but my deal is that, I went to the city staff, and they have an apprehension of us doing anything on State Highway Department rightway because of the possible liability that we might incur. And I understand that, so I don't think that we should instruct them, or I couldn't, or anyone else could tell them to do this, but the situation we have is, is over there at the old chicken hatchery plant, we have a business that's come to town there. And they've done a lot to, they brought some jobs here, and they've actually put a new roof on that building and spiffed up the place and everything, but they're having drainage problems. And what my problem is, is is there a way that we could get permission from the state and us do that? You know, when a business comes, we do a lot to try and get businesses to come to town, but when they come to town, sometimes we don't do anything to help them. And I just want to say, is there some way that this council could instruct the city staff to clean that ditch out with the permission of the State Highway Department?
All we need is go hit the state, get everybody over, and see what we can work out. Nobody's told us, but I've not been notified about that yet.
Oh, okay.
I'm getting over there.
Well, I talked to you about the other one out there the other day, and then this other come up. So we do have a way that we can do that.
But this one is different than the other one. This one is adjacent to a city street.
Right.
And we can do something with that. The other one is state maintained, state right, state roads, both sides.
You have it in 776, isn't that a state road too?
Yeah, but Graham Street, all that, which worked there.
You know, we have altern, we have an option.
But the problem's along 776.
And we've got, tried to get the state out there on that one, but we've got, forwarded all the emails on the U from the state on that one. But this one here, we can get them out there and see when we get done with it.
Okay. Okay, good deal. Well, then we don't need any action on that. We stand adjourned at six thirty two. Mr. Hobson, you make your bid.